...in a fun way, and sometimes I don't even know she taught me something. She understands different ways students learn. She stops to make sure that I understand what she's teaching. She cares about us and our learning and makes sure that we understand the material that she's teaching. Ms. Melcy is a great asset to the district, to the high school, and to her students. Please be sure to share these kind words with her. Again, thank you for allowing me to spotlight one of our great educators in our district. And let me end with this quote. "Everyone who remembers his own education remembers teachers, not the methods or techniques. The teacher is the heart of the educational system." That's by Sidney Hook. So, thank you for letting me share that. I did have another thing. So, I wanted to update you on the golf outing, as not all of you may know, but the band boosters ran a golf outing to raise money, and once again, the school board helped us and supported us with that. We were actually raised just under $2,700 to support the band, which is wonderful. And another great thing is this year, we have 20, sorry, 68 kids that signed up for marching band. Last year, we had 47. And several of them are from the junior high, so moving up, eighth graders moving up. So, we're just extremely happy with that, extremely impressed with that. So, if you can get it on your schedule at all to come watch the marching band, they're just excited, so... But, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for sharing that. (APPLAUSE). All right. If there's no one else wishing to speak, then we will go ahead and move forward to our special order of business. We have the Advantage Report with Mr. Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Allow me to introduce Ms. Heather Levi. She is a social studies teacher at Advantage and also a member of our building network. She's going to help me as we recap the school year this year. So, we'll begin with some pictures of our little cute elementary school students. Move on to the middle school students. And then finally, our high school students. When the students refer to Advantage, we go over the criteria for them to transition back to their original placement with them, so we place them on a behavior contract when they first come. And we inform them so that they know that in order to get back to their original placement, they need 90% attendance, Cs are better in all their classes, no major behavior referrals, and if you're a high school student, you need to be on track to graduate. So, this year, the number of students who've transitioned back to their original placement and stayed there successfully for the entire year were six elementary school students, three middle school students, and if you look, it says no high school students. So, it looks like we failed our high school students, but quite to the contrary, we didn't because we had high school students who were eligible to transfer back, but they don't want to go back. When they come to Advantage, they find themselves a home and a family, and they stay. Allnet is the network of alternative schools that services or that encompasses alternative schools from Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties. It gives our children a chance to participate in extracurricular activities such as basketball, softball, soccer, bowling, Quiz Bowl, the prom, and Cedar Point. We don't have a league, we just have days that our students participate in these events. And just like going to transition back to the high school, grades, attendance, and behavior are constituents for students to be able to participate in these activities. If all three things aren't together, they're not going to participate. We have a beautiful prom that takes place at McRae Harbor. It overlooks the river. It's just a fabulous time this year. Young ladies danced the night away until I was ready to go.[669.23][669.23](LAUGHING).
So, our Advantage Elementary program has several different things that we do specific for them. We have a day, our weekly library time where we encourage our students to find books that have their interest, so we can foster this growth and love for reading. We also have a weekly gym time that Will Cantrell, one of our Advantage High School teachers, he does for them. We also do a weekly, every on Friday, a mystery reader where we ask a, I don't know, whether a principal or a high school student or a secretary to come in and read to the class their favorite book to kind of just show to them that older kids like to read and older adults like to read as well. So, we also have several after-school clubs that we provide. We have a life skills club that shows them different skills such as like learning to sew. It encourages them to like learn how to like maintain a car where we actually had them out changing the tire of one of our teachers. We also got a lot of parents involved, so you can see some of the parents sitting in there sewing with their kids, right with them. We also have a book club that this year they read, what was it, Reaching Spirit Bear by Ben Michelson. We also have a chess club. This year, we were really excited as a school to celebrate Halloween, so we all had costumes and especially the elementary school, they came in with their costumes and had the opportunity to parade around through the whole school on the admin side and on the Advantage High School side, and they got to go trick-or-treating. We also did a pumpkin carving activity where we had the elementary, middle school, and high school team up together and all work as a group and to carve different pumpkins. During Christmas, right before we were setting them off to their long break, that's well deserved, we had the opportunity, especially in the middle school, to decorate the room. They were given an abundance of lights and Christmas trees and ornaments, and they were tasked with designing the classroom, and they took control of that. They worked great together, they communicated, they cooperated, and that room was very, very festive. We also did a school-wide party where we had different treats and activities and a, what is it called, gingerbread decorating competition, and we had admin come over and vote on those. And that was just a great way to send them off to our long, long break without them. So, part of our goal at Advantage is to create a community and a culture of inclusion, and so we presented this conversation that we wanted to start with them about our language and how our language actually affects others around us. And so, there's this initiative called Spread the Word, On the Word, and it's really focusing on the R-word, which is retarded, and how we should eliminate that from our language and be more intentional with what we're saying. And we actually had 30-plus students and staff pledge to eliminate that word from their language. March was actually a really great month for us. We focused on continuing that conversation about kindness and inclusion, so we had our month-long kindness challenge, and our focus was on how to be kind, giving the students opportunities to discuss that, and giving them specific actions on how to show kindness. So, we gave them a daily challenge such as, you know, saying hi to 10 strangers or holding the door open for somebody when they needed it without asking. So, just giving them those actions to show that. We also did a March is Reading Month focus, and we had a bulletin board that we added throughout the month. Every time we caught a student or a staff reading, we would snap a picture of them, print it, and add it to it, so it became a great conversation piece of who's on the board next. To kind of start wrapping up our school year and getting our students ready for finals, we kind of knew that they needed a break. So, we had a field day where we had a kickball game, we had a movie room, we had basketball and soccer, cornhole, and a relay race. And it was just a great time to spend with our kids, to give them a break from being in the classroom, outside, being active, seeing their teachers, being active with them, and just spending time with our community and our family together. We spent two different days where we had a women's empowerment day and a men's empowerment day. And in the women's empowerment day, we really focused on creating goals and the importance of goal-setting and allow these young women to create a vision board so they could have this displayed in their room or in their locker somewhere where they see it every day, and they just are given that motivation to finish out the year or finish out their high school year. We also had a speaker come in and talk about what a healthy relationship looks like. And this provided opportunities for these young women to open up and have somebody to hear them and talk about maybe the unhealthy relationships they've been in with either friends or family or even like significant others. And we did have several young women like open up and find resources to help them deal with that, and it was just a great moment to build that community, not just among the school, but among the young women with us. We also had three speakers come in and talk about their experience out in the workforce. And so, we had a neonatal nurse come in. She talked about how to become that, what, you know, what do you do, what is it, and showed them little preemie diapers. It was really interactive. We also had an EMT come in and talk about her experiences. And then we had a photographer who started her own business, and she talked about the process of like starting that and how she got to where she owns her own business now. So, Kendall's going to talk about our men's empowerment day.
So, the way we were able to have a women's empowerment day and a men's empowerment day is because we went to Wayne State University for a male summit and a women's summit, and when we went, the whole, every young lady in the school went to the women's summit and all the boys stayed back and vice versa. So, during the men's empowerment day, I had two speakers come in because I always teach to our students they would have to build themselves from the ground up. So, I gave them some examples of people who I respect who've built themselves from the ground up. So, Braxton Buckner, who's not pictured here because I'm horribly irresponsible when it comes to taking pictures, but he came to speak to us. He's a Hazel Park graduate. He just graduated from Michigan State this spring. He's headed out to Florida to work for Gardner in sales. So, he told them about his journey, and he spoke first. Ali Luwabi is a phenomenal story. He came to the United States, he owns the party store near my house. He came to the United States at 16, didn't know how to speak English or anything, said he had all of these dreams of how there's going to be money floating everywhere because the way he envisioned the United States from what he saw on TV and in the movies, and he got here and it was nothing like that. But, so, what he did was he ended up volunteering to work at the party store because he, they had too many workers. Fast forward to about 12 years later, and now he owns the party store. So, it was a beautiful story, and it was something that was very powerful for my students, for the young men who were there, and you could tell, you know they were listening because there was a young man who actually raised his hand and said, "Are you hiring?" And he said, "Yes, you want a job? I'm hiring you right now on the spot." He said, "Okay, I'm going to work for free." So, it lets you know that he heard the message that he got from Ali, which was phenomenal to me. And then we also went to the Future Teachers Conference this year. Ms. Bordelotti took 10 students, nine were Advantage students, and one high school student. She took them to Oakland University so that we could basically try to recruit them into the teaching field that we know that we desperately need teachers. I'd like you to pay attention to the young lady in the top right picture, the lady on the right in the top. Her name is Aleah Barnes. If you recall, she spoke to you guys as my first student representative. She was up here, she was very, very nervous. And this is a good segue to the graduation slide. Aleah, I also had her sit on a panel of someone who was retiring from MGM. I don't know who it was, Kayla just said she needed a student, so I sent Aleah there, right? And so, if you recall, at graduation, I gave the students carnations to pass out to people who they wanted to thank, and Aleah gave her mother the carnation, and Aleah's mother told Aleah that she was going to get a carnation to me because she liked the opportunities that I had presented her with during this school year, which was very humbling to me. It made me feel all warm and fuzzy on the inside. As far as graduation goes, we had 30 graduates and counting because I've got a couple of students who are diligently trying to finish as we're ending the school year. Hopefully, they get it done before I leave for the summer. Plans for next year, we're going to have a yearbook club, which we'll do through Shutterfly, which will cost us no money. It'll be a digital thing, but kids will be able to order their own yearbooks and have their own hardcover memory. We're going to have dances that'll be planned by students, and then what I'm most happy for or excited for is mentoring from the union. When we were at Wayne State, Jason Wilson was the keynote speaker, and I asked him for his card because he has been on every talk show across the country for his Cave of the Adullam. So, I got his information and thought I could get the Cave of the Adullam to come here, but we can't. But then I found out he has his union, and their organization's mission is to counter negative cultural influences that impact the lives of youth while providing positive alternatives to those we reach and fulfill its mission through innovative programs such as mentoring, life skills and prevention training, parent education services, career readiness, and financial literacy education. So, next year, they're going to bring their SWAG program to us, and it'll meet for a couple hours a week, and we know that this is very important to our intense network of student supports that we know is important from our blueprint that we follow. This is a quote from an Advantage student who says that teachers are always there for us and actually help us, and this is the feeling that we have, that we're a family, and the students, as I said before, appreciate the Advantage environment. And finally, I would like to thank personally Dr. Croupy and each of you school members for allowing me to facilitate the students in the capacity that I do. Are there any questions that anybody has that we can answer or that I can answer?
No, I think you're doing a fantastic job. The only thing I was going to say is that if you need mystery readers, I'm sure you could invite the board members at some point if you wanted.
I would, I'm going to hold you to it. Guarantee you, I'm going to hold you to it.
Yeah, I've been to most of the schools this year when they did March Mystery, but I'm sure we would love to, so.
We appreciate it.
But I can echo this again, we are delighted with the fantastic job that you're doing over there, and we're really grateful you've joined us.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.[1373.42][1373.42](APPLAUSE). All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda is written.
Support. Rule call?
No.
Yes.
Slap?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Ms. Hempel?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Hempel?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, can I get a motion to approve the MASB membership renewal?
Move that the Board of Education approve the renewal of the 2019-2020 MASB membership is presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Each vote, each a vote.
All right. And this is the one that we brought up last month, we met in between last month and this month, and we decided to purchase a video for the district, so we viewed some other ones, so that was Ms. Hempel's suggestion, so thank you for that. So, this membership is our regular membership plus a video for next year that we'll put in motion, so. With that said, rule call?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Hempel?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Moving on to new business, so we have our budget presentation first, informational item
Good evening. We're going to deviate from what's been down in the past. Usually, this truth and taxation budget presentation has been a separate board meeting after this one, so we're talking to our attorneys, and they've assured us we can put them together and save some time. So, just in general, with regards to the truth and taxation from an informational standpoint, we do levy four different taxes, one being the operating mills that are part of the foundation allowance. There are 18 mills, general, it's the non-primary resident property, and six mills on commercial personal property. They generate $3.237 million, and again, that's part of our foundation allowance. When the state dictates what our foundation allowance is, part of it is money that comes from the school aid fund, and it's offset by the amount that is coming in from taxes. The second mill that's out there is 13 mills for qualified debt, and that's our borrowing out of the school bond loan revolving fund. That millage rate goes to pay the debt, and it generates 4.3 million. The third piece of the taxation is two mills, which is for unqualified debt, and that, again, it's going to facility bonds in the amount of $663,000 for 1920. The last item is the capital project sinking fund. It was approved last year at three mills. There was a headly rollback on that, so we were able to levy for 1920, 2.9463 mills, and that will generate $976,000 for our sinking fund, and that is basically used for facility improvement, security, and technology. And again, it's just, this is the millages that are on the L-4029 that have gone to the city for taxation in the summer of this year. Any questions, comments on taxes?
Do they have any questions on taxes? No?
And then I guess we'll go into our budget meeting. So, what we're going to do is we're going to present our final 18/19 budgets and then go into our 1920 original budgets.
Okay.
If you got it.
Do we need to put a motion on there?
Uh... No, it's just informational.
Okay, it's still informational.
Okay.
I thought we were going to the next agenda item.
I think the budget's part of the informational item, too.
Okay.
So, again, we're just doing the final budget for 19 and the original budget for 2020. In terms of the 18/19 upcoming June year-end, we went through, gone through all the state aid, gone through grant allocations, and tried to account for any final adjustments before the end of the year. We reviewed the center program budgets, in so much as looking at the costs, but then also looking at the costs that are going to be able to come over to the general fund in terms of indirects for rent, indirect, and any excess fund equity within the center program, up to 7% can be, or over 7% can be transferred back over to the general fund, and that has impacted our general fund this year by year-end. And then we have also, you know, reviewed any miscellaneous items that could occur. So, our significant revenue changes, interest and miscellaneous revenue have gone up since our last budget amendment by 235,000. This is primarily interest earned on the excess money that we've had for a, since we borrowed last August. We were able to invest those dollars in a MyLab fund and generate some significant interest earnings. This is kind of a one-time deal because we won't have these excess funds available to us next year when we really borrow what we need. Property taxes, we received some additional property taxes. The center fund transfer, this is kind of the increase that, you know, we were, our budget is projecting that above the fund equity that we are required to maintain within the center fund, there's going to be a $400,000 excess. The ISD and the way they fund the center programs is they will allow you to keep up to 107% of your budget, or sorry, of your actual expenditures. So, if we're budgeting high, then we'll be able to, you know, generate some dollars in there. Federal grants, there are some changes in some federal grants to the tune of about 150,000, and then state and local grants decreased somewhat. In the expense side of things, we took a look again at pretty much every line item that we had, focusing in on salaries and fringes because we're getting very close to the year. At the time we did the budget, there was only two payrolls left in the fiscal year, so we were able to project that out, take a look at our summer pays and the costs associated to those summer pays in terms of retirement and fringes, other fringes. We also then took a look at the other expenses that just weren't spent. There was budget... There was budgets in line items this year that we just didn't get to spend in curriculum, being one of the big items. So significant expenditure changes, salaries, we're seeing a decrease in our expenses to the tune of about 278,000. Employee benefits, there was a decrease in about 700,000. A lot of that was related to retirement expense on employees who are retiring in their associated payouts. We had some cleaning up of the accruals, getting ready for the year end. We've kind of identified a good chunk of the dollars that are going to go back on to the P and L as a positive. Supplies, again, we're clearing out supplies, going through line items, saying we're not going to spend these supply line items before the end of the year, and same with capital outlay. So at the end of this year, we're seeing 576,000 in additional revenue and 1.7 million in additional, or in a reduction of expenses. So our final amendment's kind of committed around 37 million, 37.5 million for revenues, 34.2 million for expenditures, which is going to give us a surplus this year of just under 3.3 million dollars. What that means from a district standpoint, right now, our district deficit is 1.15 million dollars. We should end the year somewhere just under 900,000 in deficit, reducing that deficit significantly. Again, our EDEP, it goes out 12 years. Our original EDEP was, the original EDEP plan was to be out of deficit at the end of 1920, and this gets us a considerable amount of the way there. Other revenue funds, just wanted to kind of touch on those because they're still there. Food service, right now, we're projecting $31,000 surplus to end the year with a fund balance of 231,000. Again, most of that we're looking at spending next year in some capital areas that just need some work. Childcare fund, we're looking at a budget surplus this year of about 15,000, which will leave that fund with 40,000 in fund equity at the end of this year. And again, the special education fund started the year at 500,000. Given the ins and outs with the indirects and the transfers to the general fund, we should end, again, relatively in that area. On to 2020, you know, there's a lot of guesswork that goes into this budget. I hate to call it guesswork, but it really is. We don't have a state budget yet. The House, the Senate, and the governor have all proposed increases where it all falls out and when it all falls out is the question we're all asking from a business manager standpoint. We took a conservative number and projected 100 per pupil foundation increase. We projected federal and state funding to remain flat. Again, for the most part, those dollars usually go up. We're just going to, you know, maintain the flat, wait to see what falls out of the state, and then go from there. And we also accounted for any known potential changes in revenues and expenses, staff changes. You know, again, we touched on the interest earlier, reallocating line item budgets amounts, and what that is, is, you know, going back into the supply lines to the buildings, you know, maintenance, custodial, utilities, trying to rebuild what, again, we always look at the worst-case scenario when we start these budgets because we just don't know what we're going to expect to see next winter or next year. You know, what are the costs of replacing the retired employees? You know, again, we are looking at the revenue that we are going to garner from the charter school that we certified, and then all the union contract ratifications that have taken place over the last three or four weeks. There's significant impact there to the tune of almost a million dollars in dollars that we've given back to our employees to ensure that, again, we make sure that we look at our employees as number one. And that's, again, a big chunk of where our budget is actually going, the differential's going this year. This is just a graph to kind of show you where our projected state aid is, the green line is our projected. So again, it's a positive number over the last few years. We hope to see that continue with this current administration when they do get a budget done, if they get a budget done. Our enrollment trend, again, you know, we were debating on where to go with that. We did, on a conservative standpoint, go with 40 students down. Again, that's anyone's guess, we're still two and a half months away. So again, from everything that we've taken into account, our general fund budget, we're looking at revenue projected at 37, 852 million, expenditures at 36, 219,000, for a budget surplus of 1,633. And again, that leads us to have a year-end fund balance surplus, and we're out of deficit at the end of 1920 to the tune of just under 800,000. And again, when you take a look at some of the big picture items, you know, we're looking at 3.2 million this year with, you know, the salaries that we're looking at, you know, with the associated fringes, you know, that's a big chunk of where that budget surplus is being reduced from 3.2.
Say that again.
What's that?
The next two sentences.
Okay, so, oh, so, oh, the last two sentences? Oh, so, so we had a beginning fund deficit, because it's negative, of 862,000. Our budget surplus for the year is 1,633, so that will give us a surplus or a fund equity at the end of next year, so we'll be out of debt next year.
Would you use my finding?
And again, a lot of, a lot of these, well, Matt and I and our department are new to the district. A lot of these things aren't things that we've done. A lot of these things are the things that the board has put in place over the last five years, and being diligent and being careful on how things are spent, and that's where all the credit needs to go, is the decisions that they've made have led you to this position now, to be out of deficit for the first time, Matt, is it 14 years? And again, it's not, it's not a, it's a great thing, but it's also not a, let's go out and spend all this newfound money. It's, it's, let's continue on the road that we've continued on and focus on our employees and the students giving what we need to give, but, you know, making sure that we're just not spending what we have. And again, it's a great thing, and I'm more than proud to be a part of it, so, congratulations. Do you want me to say that again?
I have a question for you real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this didn't happen overnight. This money has been there for how long back?
No, no, what do you mean?
Like, if it's been like the 400,000 on center fund, like, you didn't just get that. So how long has this money been sitting here that we could have been, I guess, not directed to you, but how long has it been here that we could have been moved over to kind of give the projection?
We didn't, we didn't make a determination on the center fund transfer until just recently because, again, we've got to the end of the year, and we've looked at where our budget is versus our actual numbers, and we've gone to the ISD to ascertain how it's, how the center fund funding works. And at this point in time, we were able to say that we are going to be, our budget is going to be higher than our actual expenses, and the differential is then, we're able then to transfer that over to the general fund. So that kind of doesn't happen, you don't know what, you don't know it's there at the start of the year, but as you get closer and closer to the end of the year, when you do the reconciliations, and again, we're, it's a conservative number, the 400,000, it's just, you don't know it's there until you actually get to the end of the year, and all your, all your costs have been accounted for. Again, a lot of the, a lot of the dollars and cents that go into the center fund are salaries and fringes, but there's a lot of contracted services and transportation costs that are in there. It's just, you don't know where that fund is going to end up at the end of the year, but at this point in time, we're looking at it saying it looks like it's going to be in a good position.
I'd like to make a comment to that. If you remember correctly, in 14, 15, when all of this occurred, you were not putting dollars away into the center fund. All of those dollars were being retained by the school district. And each year, when you would have these budget presentations, you were presented with money being set aside because we were writing that, right? You have to put money away, and so each year we put that in. Last year, when Bill made this presentation, he shared with you that we were putting away last year's amount and this year's amount so that we didn't have to put those dollars in, so that when it came to the end of the year, all remaining balances could be moved into the general fund. So we were able to, last year, bring that fund all the way up, and that was a strategic conversation.
So it was kind of like a two-year process?
Right, we put, we put last, this year's amount in last year to bring that fund all the way up so that we could, we could realize everything out of that, and remember, next year, the Edison amount will be half. So because we built the building, it was going to be nothing, and then they moved that to half with the change in the resolution. So this has been an over time building that fund balance up into the center fund balance.
I didn't know you had more. I wanted you to go back and explain the 3,286,000 again, where it came from. It was only a year ago, we were asked to do a 12-year deficit because we didn't have anything, and now we have everything, so I just, I need to be more clear on this.
Again, from our standpoint, when we looked at the transition from the budget that we walked into, I think the day that you hired me, Mr. Melching had adopted a budget that was a $27,000 loss for the year. Our first budget was our best guess at that point in time, taking into account a lot of the things that we knew at the time, and it was a million dollars. So we went from $27,000 in a loss position to a million dollars in our first amendment, which was our surplus, and now we're up to 3.2. As we got closer to the end of the year, our numbers and our estimating is a lot easier when I'm trying to figure out, you know, what am I going to spend, and what does the district spend usually in the first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter? So a lot of the stuff on the screen right now, the supplies, the capital outlay, those items are items that, you know, we anticipate people to spend, it's just, you know, we're diligent in not spending the dollars. So those were, those were not spent. The clearing of the accruals was, we've noticed in the past, when we looked at what was on our books, on our balance sheet, we had an accrual on our balance sheet. We don't believe that we need an accrual that large for retirement, some other items related to salaries and fringes, so we need to clear that out of the balance sheet. And again, that's really not a cash item, it's really a book item. And then the salaries and employee benefits, those items are items that we've, as we've gotten closer to year end and we've, you know, taken away the vacancies and all the known items, now what's in there right now is known. We've only got a payroll and a half, or two payrolls left when we did this, so it was a lot more accurate of a number. And then, so that's on the, that's on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, again, we had the center fund transfer that, you know, as we got to the end of the year, that dollars, those dollars were made a little bit more reasonable and more concrete. Some interest in miscellaneous revenue, those are some of the things that we were able to do in our short time here. Property taxes just came in, there was just more property taxes that came in based on just various items. So when you look at all these things, these things are part of that, again, you have to look at it, the 3.2, we're basically going from a million dollars in our second amendment, we're increasing that 2.2 million, but it's made up of a lot of items that are across the board, whether it be revenues, but primarily expenses, and that's how we get to this 2.3 number.
And I want to speak to the 12-year deficit. So if you remember, we went to the 12-year deficit when it was shared last year mid-year from the business office, that we were going in the opposite direction. And after guidance from Plant Moran in depth and the ISD that said that we were going to be upside down, we made over a half a million dollars of cuts mid-year, as well as wanted to make sure that we put a plan in place that would allow us, if necessary, to restore salaries to our staff members, given this kind of atmosphere where teachers are not going into education or leaving the field, and we can't get bus drivers and you can't get substitutes. So we knew that if we wanted to talk about the long-term sustainability of Hazel Park, when we were giving reported where we were financially, even though we continued to express concerns that that might not be accurate, then we had to come up with a plan that would develop the long term. We continued to have the conversation of a couple things. One is that we had never hoped to carry it out to 12 years, but if we had to, it gave us the ability to make salaries as we went along and to, you know, to get us back to compensate for the salaries that people had lost. We also, you didn't know it was going to happen in the elections as well, which direction that was going to go. Fortunately for that, that's a positive outlook, one way or another for us, and so that also makes what's happening. If that had gone a different way in the elections, you don't know what those numbers would have been in front of you as well. So there's a lot of positive things that have happened, a lot of things to celebrate. If you also remember the first budget, that original budget, we also shared verbally with you that there was a concern that there was dollars in there that could have been shared differently as well. So I think, got to be incredibly grateful that we're moving in this direction and that there's been a lot of cleanup in the line items, especially as we're going to a no finance system, and I hope that that continues to show clear budgets to you guys on an ongoing basis.
What on this one here, it shows the original, is a $439,000 surplus. That was the original one.
That was the one back, back a year from almost today.
Correct.
Yep.
That would have been Mr. Melching.
That would have been Mr. Melching, and then I removed the first amendment budget that had your, had you showing a loss of 27,000.
And that was the one that was turned into the legislature.
And that was October, I believe?
Yes.
But at the same time, this is all just a proposal because we're still waiting for our auditors to come in and finalize. So based on looking on that, that's a positive, but the final line is when they show us the audit in October.
All right. Any other questions?
No, I'll let you go ahead and finish before I ask any more.
So this graph just shows the differential between our general fund revenue and expenses. You can see the last three years there, we're seeing the fruits of our labor where our revenues are exceeding our expenses. And then again, this is a graph that's just showing the gradual increase to the first time in about 14 years where you're now above, in a surplus position for your fund equity. The other fund budgets, food service, we're projecting 1,835 in revenues, 1,800 in expenditures for a surplus, again, of that year for 35,000, which is going to build our fund equity to about 266,000. There is some capital items built into that expenditure line for kitchen improvements. Childcare, we're projecting 150,000 in revenues and 135 in expense with a surplus of 15,000, building that fund equity, again, there. Activities funds, this is a new Gatsby, the activities funds is a brand-new fund. It used to be our Fund 61 or 610. The people at Gatsby sit around a table and think of all the things that they can make us do. This is one of them. They just, they're just saying that these, all these, all these activity accounts that are out there, they're really under your control. I mean, from an accounting standpoint, we hold the money, we approve all the bills.
For everyone listening, can you, can you give some examples of activities?
It's all your, it's all your different athletic clubs, it's, you know, your general high school account, your elementary accounts, you know, it could be your school, your classes of each year, it could be any trip or a club or anything else that would encompass things that, our monies are collected and paid out by the district, trips, stuff like that.
It's more like fun, some of it's fundraising, right? Like, you're bringing in money and then it goes right back out?
Correct.
And the Gatsby is the, I don't even remember what the acronym stands for, but it's the government, it's a new government issue.
Yeah, it's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and they just love to make our lives miserable. So we've had to transfer, again, what they want us to do is they just want us to keep track of the ins and outs and show a revenue and an expense account allocated to each of these funds. In the past, it's just been a balance sheet item where money's gone in and money's been paid out, and we've kind of had a fiduciary responsibility. Now they're saying that, you know, we need to keep track of it like we should keep track of our childcare and our food service dollars. So, you know, when we get to the end of the year, we'll probably see something, you'll be familiar with a term called the prior period adjustment, where they're going to reclassify some of these dollars that's in the cash as fund equity, and we'll see revenue and expenses. So you'll see the activity that goes through those accounts now, as opposed to just seeing cash and liability, you're going to see cash liability, and you're going to see how much, how much volume is going through those accounts every year. So, you know, we're just, you know, we're just estimating as 250,000. We'll get you some really concrete numbers as we get further on into the year. But again, it's just to give you an idea of how much is going through those, those clubs and those classes and those trips and those other accounts.
Is that community engagement money and Dr. Webb after-school programs?
Yep, yep, they'll be in there as well. Again, we're not going to break out each individual one, but again, it's, it's just a way for us to see in totality, what's the, what's the total activity going through those accounts? Again, there's some of those, some of those funds really get, like your wrestling, your wrestling club will have a lot of money going in and out during the year because it's quite a prevalent club. in and out during the year, because it's quite a prevalent club. And then again, the Special Education Fund, based on our current budgets, again, their original budgets as well that we did two months ago, we've got about 8.2 million in revenue and expenses, and our fund equity is going to remain consistent. And now, you know, what do we do from a budget standpoint? We wait to see enrollment, we wait to review the impact on the enrollment on operations. Again, if there's huge swings in enrollment, plus or minus, it's going to cause us possibly to, you know, add or take away people. Wait for the state budget adoption, you know, I think now they're talking out September, if it goes that far, it's anybody's guess. You know, we have to actually close our books, you know, book all our accruals, put everything together for the auditors. They're actually coming in next week to do some interim work. And then we need to review our actual expenditures and look at what's going to happen for our budget amendment next December, and then, you know, try to monitor a little bit better the grant expenditures. You know, those are always things that, you know, we need to make sure we just continually communicate to people that here, you have dollars allocated, and we'd like you to spend them. So we just got to be more diligent as in our office to communicate on a monthly basis what people have left to spend, so that these dollars go towards the kids in the year they're allocated. And again, you know, just final thoughts, I mean, it's very positive, but the school district must maintain continued focus on the deficit elimination, and there are many variables that can change, requiring our continued oversight and diligence. So it is, it's very positive, it's just baby steps, and we've taken a lot of them so far. So, questions?
No, I'd just like to thank the finance and the accounting, you guys did a fabulous job.
No, great staff working for me, it's a pleasure to come in every day, it really is.
Yeah, we're really excited. I think some of us are stunned that we were able to remove, to reduce the deficit by as much as we did, right? Like, I think that's why you're getting like questions like, is this for real? Like, because this looks like we're going to, you know, it's, you know, last year was hard, right? We made cuts, and this year you swing the other way. And I know that's part of the ebb and flow, but we're super, I'm super excited about this news today. So, thank you for your presentation.
Very positive.
Anybody else have any?
No, thank you, gentlemen.
What?
Just said, "Thank you, gentlemen."
All right, so then we can move in with, we will need some action items to actually adopt the budget. So, can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education to approve the 2018-2019 General Fund final budget as presented.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Shlak?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, I need a motion on the special revenues final budget.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2018-2019 Special Revenues Fund final budget as presented.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Shlak?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next one is on the budget for next year, the 1920 General Fund budget. Motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 General Fund budget as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Shlak?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that moves us on to Item F, which is the authorization of the state aid notes. Can I get a motion on this?
I make a motion when you approve the motion for the state aid fund that Mr. Zems is going to present.
Support.
All right, Mr. Jordanus.
So what we're asking for is just approval for us to authorize the issuance of a state aid note not to exceed $6 million. As you know, last year, we approved a state aid note that was up, just shy of $11 million. And again, a lot of that money was not necessary, which, again, we did pay interest on those dollars, but we also were able to invest it halfway through the year and generate about $175,000, I think, no, 100, $100,000, going once. So again, what we're looking at is an approval up to $6 million. We're still working on the cash flow, waiting to see, we have to submit the documentation by the end of June, I think it's June 28th. So in the next two weeks, we'll be kind of finalizing the amount that we actually need to borrow. It will not exceed $6 million, we're looking at somewhere four and a half to five million. But we're just asking for the ceiling to be placed at six. Any questions or concerns?
I'm super excited that we're borrowing less than we ever have. Obviously, it will continue to, it can go down as we have no deficit, but I know a lot of districts do borrow this money to get you through the summer, right?
Yep.
The intention of this is to float us, right? When this first state payment is when? When does that come? Like?
October.
October, and we start functioning in August, that's what some of the shortage comes from. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on this? All right, I did talk to John Garrick to confirm, I didn't have to read this, you know, 29-page resolution. So as long as we're really clear about what this is for, he said it was fine to go ahead and not read this one.
You sure?
Yeah, unless you guys really want to hear it.
We do have all.
All right, then let's go forward with roll call.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item is on the School Bond Loan Fund. Can I get a motion, please?
I move we approve the annual school bond loan repayment application as presented.
Support.
Discussion?
The School Bond Loan Fund is obviously a big organization that we owe a lot of our money to. What it is, is basically they have you do this application every year to indicate whether you're in a borrowing or repayment phase. Last year was our first repayment phase. Again, earlier I did indicate that we did levy 13 mills to pay these, or 15 mills to pay this and qualified debt off, or unqualified debt. So what this is, is basically us indicating to them what our mills are, what we're going to generate, and to let them know that there is a specific repayment schedule for these bonds, and we will, based on our loan levy, or mill levy, be able to pay an additional amount next May to the tune of whatever our differential is between what we paid and what we collected. This year, we just made a payment for 882,000, which then will reduce our principal. We had a consultant come in, take a look at it, we were paying up to, I think we were paying $2,000 a day in interest on these bonds. So us able, us being able to pay the 882,000 today will reduce that interest cost on a daily basis, and then hopefully we'll be able to reduce it next year with an additional principal payment. What this is, is just authorizing that we are going to be, again, this year in a repayment phase, and that we will be making these payments, A, next May, and next, actually, both payments should be due next May, so.
All right, any other questions from the board? All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Shlak?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammond? Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move forward with Personnel Recommendations. We have these separated to accommodate some of the conflicts on the board. We will start, can I get a motion for the ASME, which is the custodian group?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the ASME employee group as presented.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
This is a new position that we have added to the school district, so we're really excited to have a new employee join us.
Okay, great. Thank you. Roll call.
Shlak?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next item is on the HPASA, the administration. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the HPASA employee group as presented.
I second the motion.
Any discussion?
I would just like to note, we are only approving the resignation of Mr. Daley in this motion.
Okay, roll call.
Shlak?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the HPEA. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendations for the HPEA employee group as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
We'd just like to note that we have a retirement of a longtime art teacher on here of Lori Wing that we did not have an opportunity to honor and celebrate, and had been dedicated, and, you know, family's been dedicated to Hazel Park for a long time, and I just want to take a moment and honor her for her service for a long period of time to Hazel Park.
Yes, yeah, thank you for doing that. I know my kids had her as an art teacher, wishing her well. All right, roll call.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Shlak?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Next motion is on the paraprofessionals. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendations of HPPA employee group as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Shlak?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Abstained due to conflict.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Abstained due to familial conflict?
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes. Next item is the IUOE, which is the secretaries. Can I get a motion for that?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation for the IUOE employee group as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Shlak?
Yes.
Atkins?
Abstained due to familial conflict. Next item is non-affiliated employees. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation to the unaffiliated employee group as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
I just have one on this. Most of them say summer hire, and this is just approving summer school teachers?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Good clarification. Any, roll call.
Shlak?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, we can move on to our Item I, which is a recommendation for the high school principal. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and the appointment of Mr. Kenneth Melch, Melch, pardon, pardon, as principal of the Hazel Park High School.
Support. Great discussion.
So we had a wonderful teacher and administrative committee that interviewed seven candidates, and then we had another round, which some of you were able to come to, where students of Hazel Park High School, teachers of Hazel Park High School, and parents were invited to come in and interview the final three candidates, and a resounding support was given to Mr. Melch. The students and the staff members really felt that Mr. Melch was somebody who listened and really cared, that reached out to them, that really had a sense of the school, and I think it was a resounding conversation about that it's time to turn the corner at Hazel Park High School. And they really felt like Mr. Melch was going to be the leader that was going to be able to take them to the next step, as we have a lot of changes and a lot of new staff coming in through retirements. And so I am pleased to present to you Mr. Melch this evening as a recommendation to the new principal of Hazel Park High School.
All right, let's go ahead and roll call it. Do you want, do they may also have a discussion?
No, just echo what she said.
Yeah, we're excited. Welcome, we have Mr. Melch here. All right, roll call.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Shlak?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, now it's official. Congratulations.
Do you want to give a handoff?
Yes, would you like to say something? You're more than welcome, but you're under no obligation, that's just a...
I had a feeling that was coming. Anytime someone's going to say something important, they take their glasses off. I want to thank all of you, especially the members of the Board of Education, Dr. Croupy, Mr. Daley, the superb administrators that I work with all across the district, the students, the staff, and the parents in this community, and mostly my family for your support, and all of you for your faith and your confidence. I'm aware that it's both an honor and a privilege, and the enormity of the task and the awesomeness of the responsibility of this is not lost on me, to serve and to represent Hazel Park High School. And as I think of this 125-plus-year history, the district, it's been a joy, more recently, to honor the past, as we've bid a fond farewell to some of our retiring educators at the same time. I have an extraordinary excitement for the future, especially with some of the things we've heard tonight about teachers like Ms. Melcy, with Ms. Lentz in our band. And I think about the Student Services Department that I have the privilege of working with, people like Coach Rowley, who have an outrageous number of players committed to playing football and exercising already, and so many new opportunities that we have coming up ahead of us this year, with new classes coming in and new educators, especially as we turn a page and move into a new league in the MAC this year. So we'll see new faces in new places. And I also heard about Mr. Smith talking here tonight about countering the negatives in students' lives, and as a person who truly believes that culture builds achievement, thinking about focusing on keeping the positives so loud that the negatives are impossible to hear. And so I appreciate both the opportunity and your faith, and I thank you all, and I am excited to begin the next chapter in our collective lives. Thank you.
Great, congratulations, thank you. All right, moving on to Item J, approval of Hazel Park Parapro Agreement. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Hazel Park Paraprofessional Association and Hazel Park School District as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so attached you will find our agreement for our paraprofessionals. We're really excited to, again, be able to move forward in a positive financial situation while still keeping within bounds of reducing our deficit, and next year removing us out of deficit. Again, we have a very positive relationship with our paraprofessionals, and we're moving towards a real positive direction to have them restored to where they were originally for our paraprofessionals. So we're really excited for that, and hope that this allows us to have people that stay, to continue to maintain positive relationships with our students, because we know the consistency is really important, and especially for our special education students that are the ones that receive the benefit from most of these paraprofessionals.
Any other discussion?
Even though I won't be able to vote on it, you know, I'm glad that they came to an agreement, and I support the parapros.
They work very hard.
All right, roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Humble?
Abstained due to conflict.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Abstained due to familial conflict?
No?
Abstained due to familial conflict.
Atkins?
Yes. Item K is a custodial agreement. Can I get a motion for that?
I move the Board of Education approve the agreement for the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employee Union Group as presented.
I second.
Go ahead, Mr. Humble.
Any discussion?
Yes, again, we maintain an incredible relationship with our maintenance and custodial staff. We know without them, our schools don't open, our schools don't stay clean, we've also been able to try to do something to help us with transportation as well with our bus drivers and this group is always in to support each other and do what's best for the school district and so it's really important that we continue to praise them. They are a smaller crew to clean the schools that we do and they do so and chip in all the time for each other. So I'm just really excited to present to you the agreement for our Ask Me group.
Any other discussion?
I have one. On number two, it says you got all the employees that were hired before January 1st of 2019 are eligible for an advance for one step. Shouldn't it have been, didn't we just hire a few this year, which would be ineligible for it?
Yeah, and this January, this last January, they had to have been hired before then that was what the agreement was at the table.
Right, but I'm just saying that should have been sooner, it should have been like September of 18 because of the fact that you've hired, you know, we've had senior ones, now you're also giving them a step also, the new hires, am I correct?
So if you were hired January 2nd, you wouldn't get the step, but if you were hired December 31st, and so that's the same agreement that was given to the teachers as well. That's all was a half year inside the teacher contract as well.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, roll call.
Schloss?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Abstained due to familial conflict. All right, next item is merit pay proposal. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the merit pay resolution for the HPEA union as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
So during contract negotiations, it was agreed that we would give teachers on base a move, we would eliminate base and a half step and move them to one. After that, there seemed to be a disagreement between the HPEA and the district, the board, on whether or not that was a step or a step and a half. Through that conversation, we made some decisions to present to you a request to do some merit pay, which is outside the contract negotiations, to move up those individuals that were on a step to a step and a half that had been on base only if they were rated effective or higher on their evaluations. So we're asking that today so that there aren't any misunderstandings, but that we're all on the same page and we value our teachers that are in this area that had been on base step. This is not for anyone that was on one, but only those people that were on base moving up.
So based with me and anyone hired and...
Anyone that was hired at base step.
Base step.
So during negotiations, does this go for the new hires or, I'm not sure where they, because I'm not on the thing.
There could have been somebody, I doubt it though, because we, well, it could be, it could have been somebody that was hired last year, but it is...
So there is a timeframe for it as well?
Yep. There's about 26 people, I believe, is what we had across the center programs and in front of the general fund of individuals that would be moved.
So this is us fixing a so-called maybe problem?
Yes.
A hiccup.
Yes, but in the best interest of our staff because we value them.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Right, and as opposed to launching into a disagreement.
Right.
Okay, do, should I read this resolution?
I think it'd be a good idea to read the resolutions, if you still choose to.
All right, this one's not 29 pages, so that's good news. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read this one. Whereas the district desires to provide additional compensation in the future to teachers who are on the Hazel Park Education Association/ HPEA contract based salary schedule for a semester or more during the 18-19 school year and who are rated overall effective or higher on their annual performance evaluation for the 18-19 school year, consistent with Section 1250 of the Michigan Revised School Code, and whereas the decision to provide such additional compensation is prohibited subject of bargaining under Section 153 of the Public Employment Relations Act, be it resolved that the Board hereby authorizes a superintendent to take whatever action is necessary to place teachers who are on the HPEA contract salary schedule base step for a semester or more during the 18-19 school year and who are rated overall effective or higher on their annual performance evaluation to step 1.5 on the HPEA contract salary schedule as of the beginning of the 19-20 school year, rather than step one as was previously communicated, which is part of misunderstanding. Okay, all right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Humble?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, moving on to item M, Special Education Supervisor. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the administration's request to hire a 1.0 FTE Special Education Supervisor as presented.
Support. Discussion. Dr. Croupy?
So in our workshop, we talked a little bit about the need to provide support to the Special Education Department with our growing number of special education students, as well as our students that are potentially in the pipeline. This position will help Mrs. Dillard hands-on inside the school, not only running meetings, but also when we have students that have some specific growing needs, to be onsite and supporting the schools internally. We like to have a special ed administrator in as many meetings as possible and that's just not been possible with Mrs. Dillard being able to attend all of those while trying to restructure and grow the support to our special education or students that are in the pipeline for special education. So we're requesting at this point in time the addition of this position. This position would be paid at the elementary assistant principal rate. We actually have an assistant principal rate at the elementary on our scale and so it would be offset somewhat by special education revenue, but there would be some general fund dollars for that.
And what is the dollar amount that we would have for a assistant at the elementary?
Probably about $53,000, $58,000.
I'll tell you. It depends on their education that they have.
$63,000.
So...
And while you're looking at it, my other comment would be that we had Judy Berger, who did this program, and Vida Lux, and neither one of them needed an assistant, so why not?
Well, I would, I might disagree with that. I think it is something that we've needed to improve our special education programs. I think we're finding out some of the additional supports that are needed and communication and that it's been something we've been talking about for some time, that we just haven't pulled the trigger on it, didn't feel comfortable.
Also in the workshop, you also mentioned that you were going to wait until the fall to see what our numbers are going to come out with, so that way we can budget it just right. But since you're asking for it now, I have to disagree with that, because I was waiting to see what we have for us the fall and also what our audit's going to look like.
So this could be anywhere for, at the elementary assistant principal, $77,000 to $85,000.
Oh, $10,000.
Dr. Croupy, could you comment on with the opening of Edison this fall, do we expect there to be an increase in special education students?
There is an increase of special education students and a majority of Mrs. Dillard's salary is taken out of the center funds, it's not in the general fund.
We've always had large population of special ed and they even came to check on why we had so many special ed ways back. We used to have two junior high counselors, we only have one. We used to have a special ed counselor at the high school, we don't have. So I'm feeling this is kind of maybe balancing out those counselors we don't have anymore.
So we, so we do have, are you done? I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah.
Okay, so at the junior high, we replaced one of the counselors with a social worker, if you remember, so that that was one of the spots. And then at the high school, we still have a teacher consultant, just part-time, and then a teacher consultant at the junior high as well, so part-time, and that's one of the changes that Vida made last year to try to help adjust the support for the meetings because she couldn't do all the meetings either. So if you remember correctly, we moved the full-time position over in to be .5 at the junior high and .5 at the high school. So that's still a counselor that we have there and so it's just a different way of kind of looking at things. So there is some movement around into there. I think the other thing I want to address with this position is that there are some teacher positions in the budget that aren't filled at this point in time, that we're not filling, that are already baked into the budget. So this position is there, that those positions won't be filled unless student enrollment comes into play, and those are some positions at the high school. So we are, feel comfortable, I've had those conversations, that this position is well-covered within the budget that's been presented. And we're doing it so that we can hire, we can start off the year right, we can make sure the IEPs are in compliance and that we can support the administration straightforward from the beginning.
So we won't have to hire the other company to help her in doing the evaluations on the students?
An administrator, an administrator does not do evaluations. A psychologist and social worker still does. So when you do an IEP meeting and evaluations have to be done, and an administrator is there, and then the people up and underneath that do the eval, so a speech path, a psych, a social worker. So we could still, if we don't get, we have a psychologist, we know that's already potentially looking for another job. If they don't, if they do leave us and we can't fill those positions, then you would still have to hire an outside company. But remember, all of this, the amount you spend in special ed, there's some reimbursement that comes back with that, a little differently than in our general ed side. This also takes some off of the principals. So when you have somebody that's trained in special ed running these meetings instead of our principals as we traditionally have done, there's some expertise that comes along with this.
So how many social workers do we have?
So we have psychologists. So we asked, you increased one this year for, I'm not talking about center, if that's okay, because center, I couldn't do that off the top of my head, I could pull that up. So we increased by one, which we're still under the state recommendation for students, so we'll have three that'll go across to all the buildings this year. We've been living with two for a very long period of time. And then we have a full-time social worker now in every building. When I came here, if you remember, you did not have full-time social workers at the elementary buildings. You also had a half-time at the junior high and a half-time at the high school and that was, that were your social workers. I think you had one at the elementary and, so I think we had two across. Now we've been able to increase that. On top of that, we have the P2P, which is the, which we don't pay for, which are the social workers that are helping us support for attendance purposes. And we have one in each elementary school and the junior high, so that's some additional support that we have on top of that. So we're really lucky to be growing that support. It's really important, as we know, but all of those are components in making effective also special ed or prevent students from going into special ed.
So this person you want to hire would put Ms. Dillard into the schools or this, her here and the other person?
They're both going to be in the schools. There's that many special education programs and supports needed. Anytime a student is up for expulsion or has suspensions that potentially that's special ed, we need an administrator supporting. We'll also need support in our 504 plans, so this is increasing and improving our special education programs in our district.
So that there are, you're increasing the likelihood that at every IEP meeting or at these meetings, that you have someone there because she couldn't go to all of them before?
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Schloss?
Yes?
No?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
No.
Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Humble?
Yes.
And Atkins?
Yes. All right, moving on to item N, which is the approval of MTSS positions. Can I get a motion, please? This is a motion? Yes.
I move the Board of Education approve the hiring of three MTSSS elementary positions as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
So this is adding back in the three positions that were cut last year to try, the goal is to move support to the fourth and fifth grade. In truth, in order to do that, we need two extra positions at each building. We're moving one and then perhaps after another year, we'll be able to add another one. These positions were cut last year with those cuts that we made. This, these three positions are already in the budget that was presented to you tonight, so it's not an additional piece, but they're already figured into here. We are obligated to provide MTSS K through 12 in our district and right now at the elementary, we can only provide at K2 and sometimes three because we don't have enough support staff to do so. You would have known this previously by the word of Title I teachers and it was changed to MTSS, if you remember, last year because there was concerns about that it didn't, wasn't covered totally in the Title I budget. So some of this comes out of Title I and the rest of it, we put in our $31A. And so we will do the same with these as well.
And these people do what? What does they provide?
They provide interventions and support for our at-risk students.
And it's only the at-risk?
There, it is at-risk students, yes.
Is this to help us get in compliance with the 31A?
Well, it is help us to get in compliance with 31A, but it's because you're required to do a multi-tier system of support by law, so it's not just about 31A, it's also compliance with the law. And so, yes, we did in our compliance piece, we did have some areas of deficit that need improvement. It won't do it all for us yet. We will still not totally be where we need to be because we can't afford it yet. Hopefully that'll change in the next year, too.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Ms. Humble?
Yes.
Schloss?
Yes.
Yes. Next, item O, the public relations position.
I move the Board of Education approve the creation of a public relations slash communications director as discussed.
Support. Discussion.
So we've had several conversations around this and wanted to talk a little bit about bringing this to the board for conversation. The, we know through some current situations that are happening in the state, the importance of improving our communication to the community. We've talked, I've talked with the city and I've talked through the promise zone of how we encourage our students that are right here in Hazel Park to come back home. And to do that, we need to be talking about the great things that are happening, like that we're having an advantage, the fantastic things that are happening at the high school, at the band and in the programs, letting people see, and that video's going to be an example of one, but also here as well. We discussed that the budget that has been in the advertising is about $103,000. We still will need an ability, whatever we do here, we'll need an ability to still advertise, do some advertising, one way or another. And so I bring to you today for, for open up a discussion and hopefully approval of some kind of format to allow us to hire a PR community relations person. This person will also do the website, which badly needs to be updated, all of our social media, and I'm hoping to do, that this person would also do some kind of ongoing communication from the district level and also make that succinct through the buildings as well, so that the buildings all look alike with what they send out on a regular basis and that we make sure that we do that in the best way to show the incredible programs that we're doing. It's key to getting our students and again, we want our students to come home.
Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, during our workshop, I proposed that we take this person's pay out of our advertisement fund and I'm still, I don't, we have the advertisement fund, it's there. If this person can do the wonders that she's supposed to or he's supposed to do, we shouldn't need that much money to advertise to get people to come to our district. And that's my feelings on it, that they should come out and we should set a budget for that and that person get paid, gets paid out of that budget.
And Dr. Croup, you thought that, I don't know that, what portion, do you think the advertising budget would be able to be reduced based on the work that this PR person could potentially be done? What is the, what was your final?
So if we do a full-time person, that's going to take pretty much the whole budget because if, depending on if that person had single or family insurance, if you paid, if you paid 50 to 60 for a person and then you put their benefits, retirement, and that could take you up to $100,000. If you did a part-time person, then you would have, you know, that, whatever you paid less, and then you would have that budget in there. So there is a way to do it out of that budget, but I think if you do a full-time person, it's going to be tight to be able to advertise. You're still going to need to advertise your kindergarten, open houses, you're still going to, you know, that whole graduation flyer that we did, we paid for that. You don't, you don't get newspaper time for free anymore. They can't afford that. So anything that we put out there, you have to pay for. So there has to be somewhat of a little bit of a balance. And so that's, that's why I said I bring it up for discussion because I think we have to make a choice, we need something, we need to get out of head. We've got tons of good stories, you know, wonderful things that are happening. And again, we need to drown out the negative with all the positive that are happening. Thank you, Mr. Melch, that's a great phrase, because there are a lot of wonderful things that are happening within our schools that our teachers are doing.
Well, I'm looking at the other districts. Royal Oak hires a private firm. I kind of looked up their firm and I wasn't real thrilled with what they're doing, but that's what they're doing. But theirs was $60,000, the average.
Ms. Humble? They have a person and a private firm, they have both.
Well, in the sheet here, it only says private firm.
Yeah, it's 59.5 slash private firm.
So that, that's their 59.5 and they have a private firm is what that means?
Okay, well, they're a private firm. Anyway, so you're looking at 60, there's 70 on the others. So if we hired someone at the most at $70,000, I don't, how much?
Plus their benefits.
It's going to take over $100,000 if you go that high.
So we're going lower than these salaries, but it's the benefits that creep up.
If you go 50 to 60, you're going to be at 100 with the benefits because retirement's high.
Okay, then you've got $20,000. I thought we set the budget for 120. You're saying 103, but I think that back when we set a budget for advertising, we had it at 120. So if you have your person hired in at, let's say, total benefits 100, that gives her $20,000 or he $20,000 to play with advertising and it should all come out of that fund.
And at the same time, we can all adjust it up for now.
Yeah, but I'm afraid that if we just give it open range, it's going to go way over.
Well, no, but we, we're the board, we set the amount, play in the budget.
That's why I'm saying if we set a dollar amount, then it comes to us to go over. But I think $120,000 in that account, we can see what this person does and if we need this person, have them like on a probation or a yearly, is it working or isn't that?
I think that, yeah, having a new position like this, I think we all have questions about exactly what it will look like and how we'll feel. So I do think that that's fair to say, okay, after a year, let's see how this is going. Did it, did it, do we see what we wanted to see out of it? I think that, I think that's fair. I think what I hear Dr. Croupy saying is she doesn't think we can absorb a whole salary in that budget, but a part-time would probably be doable. And I guess we as a board have to decide, yeah, what?
Well, there goes Jason's profit.
Dr. Krip is saying is, she doesn't think we can absorb a whole salary in that budget, but a part-time would probably be doable. And I guess we, as a board, have to decide, yeah, what?
Well, there goes Jason's profit.
No, I, I, I have to share my thoughts about this, and I think that we do wonderful, magnificent things in this school district, and people do know. And when you have any event, you have 2, 3, 400 people come to the huddle, and I think we do marvelous things. I think the principals newsletters are great. I think that there's beautiful pictures on Facebook. I think there's a lot of that going on, and people know it. And I think the root cause is behavior. And I don't think, I'm in favor of the special ed spending the money. I don't think it too. We can conquer the behavior issues that I know are prevalent across the country, read about it. But we're Hazel Park, and we need to fix Hazel Park's behavior problem. And we also have the blueprint that Dr. Chandler says, they talk about us across the whole state of Michigan, that we're a lighthouse, but it's not on any of our literature. And are they talking about us? Because they should be talking about our all-night party and our graduation and all of those wonderful things. So at this time, until there's a budget approval, it's just, it's not the right timing for my support, I guess, of the marketing person.
I guess I can lay in. I, I have some new neighbors in the neighborhood who have children, and they didn't realize that we were a promise zone. They didn't realize that we have AP classes. They have children from high school all the way down to elementary school. They didn't realize some of the key programs that we have with the Christor School to Work program, because they're kind of like me. They're that weird millennial who has, may have a Facebook account, but don't go on it. Maybe don't go on the internet to do things, kind of rely a little bit on, on learning from the, your community members and learning from publications that are out there in your face coming to your door. And so I see this being a benefit. If I, I know some people don't like when I reference my, my professional life, but we just hired a communications team in our, in our agency just for this type of branding. And watching somebody who has that expertise in that, in that building and that network that they come with, and watching the awareness that is built up from the ground up with these folks, I, I think there is a need for it now. I think that this person has the potential to probably pay for themselves eventually after a year with the amount of students. We can definitely set a metric as we look at our board goals, and for summer planning, about what this person looks like. But I, I'd love to start, actually starting off a school year in the right direction with all of our staff, hopefully there, and doing as much advertising as possible. That's just some of my, my feedback, is why I've seen, I've seen effective communications people work. I've seen the opposite, right, where people don't work out either. So I also think that we also need to get a competitive salary out there. And so I, I'm, I'm okay with this. I'm okay with moving our district forward, and we have it on here to communicate as one of our goals, and we've said it time and time again for our superintendent and ourselves to communicate. And it really was concerning with me when I walked up to two new people in my neighborhood who didn't know anything about the school district, and they're, they're brand new to the community, brand new to the area for that matter, and they were about to send their kids to Royal Oak because they had heard about Royal Oak School so much on the radio and in the, on the news. And, and I said, no, you should send them here. We have way cooler things. So that's just my feedback.
And I, I want to tell you that I'm comfortable with the, you know, the ultimate would be a full-time. I'm concerned with that, that you're, you might be handcuffing a person new to not be able to make flyers and things that we need. And so that would tend to make me think that if we want to do it that way, I'm supportive of, you know, as the board wishes, that we should maybe consider a part-time person and see how that grows, to, so that there's room within that budget line item for them to update the flyers that we don't have anymore, make pamphlets, do those kinds of things that they need to within that budget, budget framework. And, and then grow and see what it's, seeing what it does. It might be difficult finding a part-time person, I don't know. You know, I need to reach out. I know I talked to Crystal Proxheimer a little bit at the build, the community build on Wednesday, and she's had, has some ideas. But I haven't gone out there to look for a part-time or a full-time, because I, we've been in this discussion for a while. But there are some things on the horizon that are really important that we need to get out ahead of some really good stories.
A fresh look is always good.
All right, so do we want to keep the motion at full-time, or do we want to amend it to half, to part-time? What is, are we ready to move forward with a vote?
And are we setting a, are we paying it out of the advertising? Are we setting an advertising budget? That, that would be my determination on how I vote.
You would need an amendment to your motion if you so choose to do that.
I'm okay with the full-time person. I'm okay with, these are just my thoughts. If we wanted to look at our budget planning, coming, you know, down the pike with, I know we have 120,000 in the count now, I would be comfortable moving that up, too, depending on what you can hire somebody at. That'll be what, that'll, that'll determine it for me, anywhere between 150 to 200,000 in that, in that account.
So we have 103 in there right now, and, and if you wanted to set it at 120, that's the board. I think 150 to 200 might be too much, and I'm, I'm okay with a part-time person, if we're going to do it out of that fund. I'd like, I'd like us to be pleased with where we're going and feel comfortable with where we're going with this. I think it's a step for the board. I think people are doing it around us, and, and I think it's important for Hazel Park at this time. That's, it's, it's very important.
So if we amended it to be part-time out of the budget, would that be, help you in your supporting?
I will go with 120.
Okay.
She can hire however she wants to, or he, whoever they want to hire. Anything over that comes back to us to amend the advertising, because I think we do a lot of what we think is good advertising that we've done in the past. I think it's bad advertising. So I think, you know, this person can maybe make a right choice of what attracts people, maybe.
So I amend my motion that the Board of Education, I move the Board of Education approve the creation of a half-time public relations communications director to be paid for out of the advertising fund of a, capped at 120,000.
Who was this?
The Westboro? Yes, I support.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Roll call.
No.
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Anthony?
No.
Mr. Hempel?
No.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes. All right, moving on to item P, the latchkey stipend. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation on employee stipend in the latchkey program to assist in areas of programs oversight and collection and management of latchkey EPs as presented with discussion.
Support. Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Zernis, you going to speak to us on this?
At this point in time, we, as I illustrated earlier with the budgets, we're seeing the latchkey programs thrive under Andrew's tutelage. And what we're looking to do here is provide some assistance and focus on getting a multi-site program director, which will cost the district 12,500 is what we're proposing for a stipend, for somebody within the district already that has the elementary requirements to meet the, the latchkey program requirements. And again, we're also looking to purchase some software that'll help us track our, our students within the program, track the dollars, do some monthly reports, as well as year-end reports for the IRS. So again, again, like I said, this was going to be covered out of the existing dollars that are being generated within that program. I think this year, we're estimating 15,000. Again, with some of the changes, another 5, 10, 15,000 there as well. And, and again, it's, it's just a, it's an improvement within the program. I mean, we've made great strides already. But again, it's just, we want to see Andrea kind of focus on GSRP, and latchkey takes up a lot of her time. And so what we're trying to do is, we're, you know, pull Stephanie away from latchkey, as she's one of the site supervisors. Andrea supervises the other three. What we're going to do is, the, the stipend will pay for another individual to oversee the three. Andrea will still remain at Webster in overseeing that site. And again, it's just helping us try to focus on where we need to focus on and keeping our employees maximized.
And you said that this is paid out of the money that you collected from latchkey?
Correct. So right now, the, the fund is self-sustaining, and it's generating about 20,000 a year. Again, a lot of that is attributed this year to, you know, the collection of the DHS payments. But again, it goes to the diligence that, you know, there's a lot of things that if you don't watch this program, it can get away on you very quickly. We've made great strides and great improvements in the accounting, trying to, you know, make it consistent across all the sites. The accounting software package will make it easier for people to check in. You know, we can do, you know, scans on cell phones and stuff like that to check students in. You don't have to worry about sign-in sheets, you know, all that's going to be, you know, encompassed within this accounting software that we're going to buy, or this, this program we're going to buy. And so from our standpoint, it's, it's just the ease of use. It's not, it's not using Excel document to track all your students' times and payments. No, this is all electronic. It's, it's scan and go, electronic statements, you know, payment on credit cards that we can now accept through this software, that we haven't been able to collect. Right now, we're collecting cash and check.
That's what I was just going to ask. So currently, we're just doing cash and checks, so it's, it's a lot less convenient.
And, and again, we recognize that, that our parents are, you know, may not have the credit card capability. So we're going to still try to, we'll push the credit card, but if, if cash and check, that, it's still an acceptable payment or form of payment.
I'd like to make a statement. I, I first want to make sure that, that we're aware. I mean, I think for years, this has rested in the GSRP portion, but it, it is unwieldy. If you think about, in order to really follow the rules, you need to be spending several, two hours at each site a week. And while our principals will have some oversight of this, they're already doing this, to ask Ms. Bratton, and even though I think it's become very near and dear to her heart, and it's very painful to, to let go, when she has to be there early in the morning, and then she needs to be in the district late in the evening, that's just not, not right. So to have, to give somebody else that, that oversight to do this, their time would be from 3:00 to 6:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and then summer oversight of the latchkey as well. And perhaps we would find ourselves growing a latchkey as well, maybe into some early release programs as well after school. So we see this as an opportunity to someone just to focus on latchkey and let Mrs. Bratton focus on our early childhood and, and perhaps continue to grow our early childhood program as well.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I think the fact that latchkey is self-sustaining is, is important. It's good to hear, because I don't, you know, there was a time where not all of our programs worked. So any other questions or comments from the board? All right, roll call.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Yes. All right, item Q, youth project coordinator. Can you, can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the hiring of a youth project coordinator to the Hazel Park Community Coalition as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
Okay, so the Hazel Park Community Coalition is blessed to have Jared Gageos as our executive director. However, as we also know, he has a full-time job at the city. So looking at the grant dollars that we have, we are able to request a community coalition, a project coordinator. So Mrs. Noth, myself, who sits on the board, Mr. Webb, Jared.
Mr. Klobuchar.
Mr. Klobuchar. We all interviewed and approved this position and interviewed this candidate. So we're really excited to bring her on. But of course, because we are the, we are the fiduciary responsibility for this grant, you as a board have to approve this person.
I was just going to ask that question.
So, so it's not really, it is benefiting our school, because this person will be working with the students. So, and, and we had 85 applications that we went through.
Wow.
And this is a dynamite graduate student who has a lot of ABA background, applied behavior analysis, a lot of background working with youth. And so it, it actually is going to be another dynamite position to help support our youth as they're thinking about hopefully refraining from substance abuse and other drug use.
We can't get her in the district?
Suppose that, her office will be at the high school.
Well, no, I mean, hire her as an employee.
As the president of the Hazel Park Coalition, I would say that we should not be stealing from the coalition. But she is only part-time while she's in graduate school, and perhaps when she graduates, it might be something that she looks at.
All right, roll call.
Schlack?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Yes. Item R, the MHSAA membership. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Michigan High Schools Athletic Association Membership Resolution as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
So every year, you're asked to approve to be a part of MHSA, and this helps you with providing of an assurance plan and concussion care, as well as if you don't approve this and have it turned in, you may not participate in any tournaments.
Even though we're going to the MAC.
Well, MHSA is the state overriding association, whether you're in the MAC or whether you're here or not. So it's state competitions you're looking at.
I thought the same thing when I read it, Mr. Hempel. I had to think through that, too.
Yep.
All right, roll call.
No?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Anthony? Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Schlack?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes. Item S, the MASAA Fall Conference. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the attendance of Dr. Krip to the MASAA 2019 Fall Conference in Traverse City as presented.
Support.
Objection.
Discussion.
Can I go with you?
So, so yes, you may. And every year, I say I'm going, and every year, I don't go, because it's in September. So I'm really going to try to go this year. And, you know, I think there's a lot of, uh...
We'll go in your place.
And, yes, you can go at my place and attend the conference.
That's right.
So we are, you know, work hard again to make sure, I think with some really stable central office and some things going in a positive direction, it's really important that I do try to attend.
I was going to say, your new super assistant superintendent might do a fabulous job.
Yes, they are. Look at how he's got that budget. All right, roll call.
Schlack?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Anthony?
Item T, appointing parents to a PAC. Can I get a motion?
I move we approve the administration's recommendation and appoint two parents to the Special Education Parent Advisor Committee as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
Hello, there, board.
Hello.
So I am, I was made aware in this role that Oakland Schools is asking each district in Oakland County to provide either one or two parents to be elected to their parent advisory committee, hence PAC, PAC. You have one parent per one, if you have 100 students or less, you elect one parent. But we've got more than 100 special education students in our district. So we're going to, we're going to send, hopefully that you approve two parents. I spoke with both parents. One was a recommendation from John Maroso, who is one of our long-term, longtime special education teachers in Hazel Park. And the other was a recommendation from Dr. Krip. So I called these ladies. They both were very enthusiastic, very excited to represent Hazel Park in Oakland Schools on the PAC committee. So these ladies will do a number of things. They will attend a monthly meeting every Wednesday night from 7:00 to 9:00. They will participate in two Saturday workshops with this organization. They will bring feedback back to Oakland Schools and hopefully back to our parents and how things are going, try to keep them current on legal issues and special education, those kinds of things. They will work to help improve upon and stabilize different programs and services that our special ed kids receive in our districts. They will work on different committees at their discretion. So however, however much they can participate, they will do those things within, on this committee. And they'll bring information, like I said, back to the parents of our special education students. And so this is completely voluntary. They are very excited, very enthusiastic to participate. So this will be, hopefully be a great springboard to bring, for me to work on bringing a PAC to Hazel Park as well for our special education parents down the line in the fall. That's the goal.
So are these, these are parents of students, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Two of our special education students.
Okay.
Both mothers.
All right, any other comments from the board, questions? All right, roll call.
Schlack?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Hempel?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Mrs. Hempel?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes. All right, moving on. Thank you. That's really cool. Moving on to item U, Chromebook and iPad replacement. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approve the administration's recommendation for the replacement of Chromebooks and iPads using the sinking fund revenue up to the amount of $357,382 as presented.
I second the motion with discussion.
All right.
All right, so as you see in the recommendation, we were able to do an inventory with the great team that I have. Currently, we have, you know, 1,782 Chromebooks, 1,307 no longer auto-update. What that means is we would manually have to go to each Chromebook and spend five, 10 minutes, depending on how many updates it needed. So if you factor that in, you don't even have 10 minutes of Chromebook, you're looking at 6,500 minutes, factor it in, it's two and a half weeks. Chrome updates every six weeks, so you're getting a month at a time, you're back out there another two and a half weeks. The iPads, we have 1,105 in the district, 362 no longer update, which then means the apps that the students use for learning can't be updated on those iPads either. So that's why we wrote the recommendation to replace the Chromebooks and the iPads, not to exceed that. Like I say, we're still looking for some quotes to come in, see if the pricing can be any lower, and if it will, if it is, and they're a good product, we will go with the lower bid.
So you'll come back to us when you actually have the bid to purchase them? Is this, or no, this is it? Okay.
Yeah, we do have one for this amount.
Okay. You have this, and then if you.
But we're just trying to see if we do get one back lower, and it's still a good quality. We don't want to get bad quality out there.
All right.
Because normally, a recommendation would be with three bids, correct? But so far, you only seem to be able to get one?
Well, we've gotten one.
Mr. Zarnes, could you move to the microphone so that we can get that on the video for the community? Thank you.
So currently, we've, we have three, we have three in hand, but we're searching for additional ones, because again, what we've done in the past is, is, you know, sought out the bids and then, you know, went to try to get deeper discounts on some of the per-unit pricing. And again, from our standpoint, when you're buying this kind of volume, if you can get three or four dollars off a price, it's going to come back, you know, five to $10,000 in savings. You know, in addition, again, so what we're doing is we're providing you right now the highest bid, and what we're saying is, is we'd like to approve up to this $357,000 to spend, but our intention is just to get this down as low as we can go. The reason we're bringing it to you now is because it's about a four-week lead time, so by the time, you know, if we waited to July, it's gonna be four weeks, and then we're gonna have a whole bunch of Chromebooks sitting in a room, and they're not gonna be deployed when the kids come back into school. So, you know, we're hoping that you'll approve this at not to exceed, and then we will go from there, and we will bring back you, an update to you in July to tell you where we ended up and how much we did or were able to save the district. One other thing that's not on this memo is the Google Management, there's a cost of $25, or sorry, $24 a unit to do the updates and push installs, so that'll be an additional $31,000. And again, we will not be able to save any money on the 24. Most places charge 25, and 24 is the lowest I've seen it in four years.
Could I ask, if I remember correctly, there was some discussion about selling back some of the units?
Yeah, we do have a local company that contacted us, and if we sell back the Acer Chromebooks, you're looking at $33.75 a piece credit, and then the iPads were the same price. So just the basic numbers that I kind of gave them, we were looking at like $30,000 back in credit, and that's only selling back 500 Chromebooks. Obviously, we have 1,300 that we can sell back, so that'll bring the credits back.
Now, would that include the ones that we are using?
There's Acers, so yes, that would include those.
Oh, the ones we have right here? Yeah. I thought you meant you were like literally ours.
It includes Samsungs and Acers, and with the proposal that we have, these are good for six years, they'll update for the next six years, so 2025, so we can, it gives us plenty of time to work on another refresh down the line.
So I know we worked to have the millage pass so that we could include IT, right? Like, that's why we're able to do the Chromebooks out of the sinking fund. I'm really excited that we're gonna replace this money. I didn't know how we were gonna go about that.
Well, one of the conversations that we had along the way, and I don't want to steal their thunder, is that we are, we did receive the security grant, so this summer, we can use that for our security, then we can, they, it'll give time to have a proposal next year out of the sinking fund and out of those dollars about what you might want to do for technology, what you might want to do for security.
I just have a question. How many Chromebooks did you not get back?
I don't have that number quite yet.
Did we?
Because we were still getting some back Friday, even when school was closed, and we may have gotten some back today. I know just on the seniors, I think we were out 40 that we hadn't received back yet, so.
Okay, because I guess if you're gonna purchase a new one, we need to have a plan in place of, you know, making sure we get the new ones back.
Because, yeah, we got the letter.
Yeah, I did get your letter, I was like, I turned it in.
I think the number is three to 4% is a normal loss for a school district, and so, but there's the letters in process for us to try to get them back.
Or the money to pay for them.
Yes.
Or their diploma.
Right? We cannot hold diplomas.
Why not?
It's illegal.
All right, so I'm excited about this. My kids use Chromebooks, and I know they were showing their age, and they were having bugs, and I don't, they didn't have control this year, but last year, there was some that were out of, just having, struggling, right? So I'm really excited. I think that the kids are gonna really feel the difference of this. This is gonna increase their aptitude to want to be on them when they're faster and, you know, so I think it's great. Any other discussion? Roll call.
No?
Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Abstain due to a work conflict, due to one of the companies you're gonna purchase from. All right, so moving on, thank you, for item V, approval for services for copiers. So.
I move the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation and approve the lease agreement for services for the copiers in the school district as presented.
Support.
Discussion.
So, you know, the earlier board meeting, you approved Millennium Business Machines as our vendor. We went back to them, and we did a walkthrough of all the buildings, we looked at the usage within the buildings themselves, and we determined that our fleet was going to be comprised of pretty much the same copier, so a 65-page a minute machine spread throughout the district, so that it gives us the ability to, every six months or a year, interchange the higher-volume machines with a lower-volume machine and equalize our usage across the district. And as well, putting the same machine in every building, it, there shows no favoritism or anything like that. Why does someone get an 85-page a minute and I get this 35-page a minute machine? And again, our, one of the discussions we had right from the start was whether it was going to be a purchase of the fleet again, like we did with the cannons that you see in the hallway 13 years ago, or do a lease. There is, there is some savings doing a purchase of the fleet. I think the difference here is about $18,000 over the 63 months. But again, it puts us in the position where 63 months from now, we probably won't make that decision to replace. And from my standpoint, we don't have the 200, well, in retrospect, this is about $125,000 upfront costs that we'd have to put in, so that, because I don't want to finance it, because it'd be no difference then between financing or leasing. So again, we've used up our sinking fund dollars that are gonna be put towards technology and security and equipment, and this is gonna be a zero impact on the general fund once we take a look at some of the other contracts that we have to manage our print software. So my recommendation is to move into the 63-month lease, so that at the end of the 63 months, you know, we do have to make the decision on whether we want to, you know, take a look at these and move forward with the machines we currently have, but my hope is, is that at that point in time, we make the decision to again, re-lease a new set of machines that, you know, are up to date in technology and don't have the wear and tear on them. So, any questions or concerns?
I would assume that the schools will be thrilled to have new copy machines. I know I've been in there when they've had people servicing them all the time, and that was years ago.
Yeah, and as a PTA president, using the machines, holy moly, even a few years back, was tough.
And these are the latest and greatest. I mean, you, you know, scan, you know, we're not, these machines will not have these fax capabilities. We went away from the fax, we're gonna go to a new solution, any fax solution where you still scan, but then you're sending it out in an email, and the faxes that are coming in are going to be sitting in your inbox. So again, from our standpoint, it's a privacy and security issue that, you know, people aren't seeing faxes that weren't meant for them, you know, there isn't any health information sitting on a fax machine for a day. So again, it, you know, by pulling out the fax cards and eliminating the fax lines, there's additional savings that, you know, when you bundle it all together, there should be zero impact in the general fund. And we've gotten brand-new machines, so it's a win-win.
Does our lease include the time?
Yeah, the, so the $18,000 a year is our estimate on 5 million copies a year, and that includes any maintenance, any toner, so if anything happens with these machines, their location is in Livonia, and there's usually a guy out here within two hours. I had them in my previous district, and they were great. Anything that went wrong with them, they were here fixing it. And again, that's at no cost to us. So toner, staples and service are all part of the click rate that they're providing us for these machines.
All right, roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
No? Yes.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
Yes. All right, moving on, item W, can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education approve the Edison Work Change Order as presented.
Support.
Sorry. I timed it.
Just waiting for my cue. So this is, this is an $84,000 change order. It's not one item for $84,000. This is more or less the wet winter and the effect it has on trying to build in Michigan. The biggest chunk of this was, we had to continue on with Section C, which is, which is the jam area and classrooms. The, we wanted to go in and put new floors in with the concrete, and the soil was just so saturated, we had to, you know, bring in the heavy equipment to bring, get the soil out, put the soil back, put better soil in, to, in order for us to lay the foundation and the floors. Then there's just a myriad of other charges that are, again, all related basically to the poor soils on site because of the heavy rains and the winter. And again, this is, this is part and parcel of some of the issues that we've had with the Edison Project and the overruns that we've seen that are associated with it. But again, this is purely unforeseen, just poor soil conditions due to the moisture.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
Are they on schedule to be ready for next September?
They are looking for turnover, turning over the building early August. Most of the equipment, or some of the furniture is already in sight, some of the millwork is in. A is looking very well. I mean, it's painted, it's ready to go. I think just the flooring and the IT is left in there. We're going into flooring and some of the other, you know, finishing work, and B. C is still, you know, we're still putting up some concrete block, but it's coming along quick. Again, it's, it's, the weather's nicer and, you know.
Is it, is it nice?
Well, I mean, it's not sub-zero, so they're not having to heat.
It's nice enough to work.
But, you know, the windows are in, the heating units are going in, it's, it's moving along very quickly now.
All right. I'm excited, and when it gets finished before school starts, I would like to maybe take a tour of it. Yeah, I would, too. So Buildings and Grants Committee, invite all of us, whatever you know.
Only three board members have time. Dr. Croupy's orders.
Maybe it won't be a committee meeting. We need a tour.
Yeah.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Abstain due to familial conflict. All right, that moves us on to Board Member Administration comments. Schlock?
I'll start. I want to thank Mr. Humble and his staff member, I can't remember her name, for the great presentation on advantage, it's really great to see things happening there. I want to thank the business office for the great news about the budget surplus, and I hope that that is, comes out to be what they're projecting. I know there's been some difficult times here in the district, and I know that there's been sacrifices of employees, and really appreciate what they've done and sticking with us, and I'm happy to see that we're moving in a much more positive direction. And also, I want to say how much fun I had at the Scott Park Build. I know that some of you guys were there with me that night. I did end up going back on Friday, and I dragged my kid with me, and we hauled mulch for four hours, and my arms were sore all weekend, but it was worth it, and I can't wait till they finish and open.
Yeah, I would love to just see a raise of hands of people who participated in that, because I saw so many people there. It was awesome, so.
It was, it was great.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it was.
I would just like.
Mulch in our shoes.
I don't want to see mulch anytime soon. I saw a lot of mulch myself.
We have rocks. Yeah, all rocks, no, all rocks Wednesday, all mulch on Friday, so.
I would just like to say that graduation for the high school went very well. Then we had Alternative Ed, Jordan, and Invest. They were all special in their own ways. I was really touched by the Invest graduation. Those kids worked very hard, they have a story, not that our kids don't, but it was a really touching graduation, just like all of ours, and I was very proud of all of our kids. As a board member, that is the joy that we get for being here, countless meetings, just to hand those kids their diplomas, to see that smile on their face is worth it.
Okay, so in front of you, we have the secretarial agreement that we did this afternoon, and again, really excited to say that this is our first unit that has restored and surpassed their salary schedule in Hazel Park. This is, I believe, what did she say? How many years?
Fifteen.
Run the map, 15 years, I think she said, since there's been a raise for them above their salary schedule. So, we are tickled pink to be able to come out of that and get them moving in the positive direction in their salary schedule. You know, again, you know, just like, you know, I know every staff member is important, but your secretary is that first face that you meet when you enter the schools, and it's important that they too feel valued and cherished as we know they do. You know, we're lucky to have outstanding staff. This is our final agreement. This finalizes all your negotiating. Kudos to you as a school board for supporting all of our staff here in Hazel Park.
They've already voted on this?
No, they have not voted, just like we did with the teachers. It was this afternoon, they'll take it next week for voting.
Okay. Roll call.
Schlag? Yes. Mr. Humble?
Yes.
Hammons?
Yes.
Mrs. Humble? Yes. No?
Yes.
Abstain due to familial conflict. All right, that moves us on to board member administration comments. Miss Schlag?
I'll start. Um, I want to thank Mr. Kendall and his staff member, I can't remember her name, for the great presentation on advantage. It's really great to see things happening there. I want to thank the business office for the great news about the budget surplus, and I hope that that is, comes out to be what they're projecting. I know there's been some difficult times here in the district, and I know that there's the set prices of employees, and really appreciate what they've done and sticking with us, and I'm happy to see that we're moving in a much more positive direction. And also, I want to say how much fun I had at the Scott Park Build. I know that some of you guys were there with me that night. I did end up going back on Friday, and I dragged my kid with me, and we hauled mulch for four hours, and my arms were sore all weekend, but it was worth it, and I can't wait till they finish helping.
Yeah, I would love to just see a raise of hands of people who participated in that, because I saw so many people there. It was awesome, so...
It was, it was great.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it was...
I would just need to... Mulch in our shoes. I don't want to see mulch anytime soon. I saw a lot of mulch myself.
We have rocks.
Yeah, all rocks, you know, all rocks Wednesday, all mulch on Friday, so...
I would just like to say that graduation for the high school went very well. Then we had Alternative Ed, Jarden, and Invest. They were all special in their own ways. I was really touched by the Invest graduation. Those kids worked very hard, they have a story. Not that our kids don't, but it was a really touching graduation, just like all of ours, and I was very proud of all of our kids. As a board member, that is the, the joy that we get for being here, countless meetings. Just to hand those kids their diplomas, to see that smile on their faces is worth it.
Ms. Sin?
Sure. Well, one, I was able to, going on with that, a refa who was from Invest was interviewed this evening by Channel 7. I was also able to be a part of that interview today. So, go out to Channel 7 and see her story about how she came to the United States, what it took for her to come to the United States, and how she graduated. That's just an example of the wonderful things that are happening in Invest. We had over 50 graduates, and when we started four years ago, there were not that many graduates. So, kudos to that partnership that we have, and Invest is a Hazel Park school, they graduate with a Hazel Park diploma, it is a, it is our school. On another note, I was able to keynote the Michigan Virtual Cyber Academy graduation. They had over 275 graduates out of 315. Of those 175 showed up, they couldn't have been kinder and more receptive and thankful for Hazel Park and the Hazel Park Board of Education, and their stories too were amazing. There's an article that aired on Channel 2 last week about the young boy who was struggling to get out of bed and had some physical limitations and walked across the stage. Can I tell you the achievements that these students have gone through? We are so grateful to have so many paths here in Hazel Park that our students can be successful. You should be commended as a Board of Education to be thinking through those and giving kids opportunities to be successful. I too want to thank the school district for allowing, first of all, our custodians gave their time. We were able to send our custodians during the day to go over and help with the park. It is truly a community build, what an amazing feeling. Our interns, some of them in the room here, were out there working, and we appreciated them as well. And we saw students, we saw parents, our building administrators, our technology director was out there. You know, it was a full-on supporting the community here in Hazel Park for the things that they give to us as a school district, so thankful as well. I do want to thank also for the board. You had to make some very courageous decisions in 2014 and 15, and that is not easy, and you have had incredible challenges in the last four years that aren't easy. And I believe, you know, Jimmy Patterson would talk to me oftentimes, as he told you, when you went on this journey, it was not going to be easy. It's not over yet, but I can tell you that when you are questioning where we're at when the auditors come in, that truly Matt and Jason have done a fantastic job, and they would have not put these numbers in front of you if they were not incredibly confident that these numbers were coming in where they were going to come in. Because if you put them in front of you and then they don't, there are serious consequences to the school district. So, you need to smile tonight because you made courageous, courageous decisions, and you took a lot of flak from along the way, but the tide is turning if you can't feel it. If you didn't feel it in the park, and if you're not feeling it now, the tide is turning, and there are only good things to continue to come in Hazel Park, so thank you for your courageous decisions. I'm done.
All right. Sammons?
Chipper of the Thunder.
That's my job.
I'm just thankful that we're all here and that we're working together. That's the most important thing, and we're working together for the kids.
All right. Mr. Humble?
The summer is almost upon us, next Friday, possibly, but other than that, it should be an exciting summer. All right. Wish everyone a safe and happy summer, and then we'll go, like my wife said, the graduations are all the best time of the year. We can't ask for any better students than what we have when they commence in graduation. I thank them all. Other than that, everyone, thank you.
I'm just short. Graduations are awesome, that's what all the work's all about, so to be able to go see all those successful students on all levels and, and all types of work is, that's what it's about. Meetup and Eat Up, I think that's how you say it, Summer Lunch Program starts on the 24th at the high school and the 27th at Webster, is that correct, Ms.?
Webb.
Webb. Okay, on the 27th. But anyway, Meetup and Eat Up this summer, and last year, it wasn't well-attended, so pass the word around, get our kids up there for lunch, breakfast, so...
Yeah, I was thinking about that today, because the marching band was at the high school, and I'm like, I wonder if they started the program yet, but it... We talked about Scott Park. I was there a few days, it was fantastic. I, I really enjoyed it, and I need to drive by and see it all a little more cleaned up. I know they have a little more work with some painting on Tuesday, I think they're looking for volunteers. Is that tomorrow? Tomorrow? I did want to piggyback on what Colin talked about with Ms. Melsey being awesome at the high school, so I hope that we can share, you know, his comments, my daughter had her as well, and just over and above, and, and teachers make a difference. We heard that in graduation speeches at each of our, you know, our graduations, that the teachers make the impact, and when you look back, as we heard earlier, when you look back, students look back, remember their schooling, they remember the teachers, they remember, you know, some of the events. So, I, I think she's great, and, and just so thankful for all of the staff and administration that we have that's working so hard, and hopefully, everybody is wrapping up the end of the year. For the board, we are going to look for some retreat times, we talked about, we're going to get some dates out to you so we can block off some time to do some strategic planning, and so, expect that. I guess I'll say that, because we don't have dates quite yet, but we're going to get those set aside, because Dr. Kripke and I met today, and we were trying to figure that out. We have a workshop in July, but we're going to need a retreat after that. Okay?
Okay.
So, you've been busy.
I know, I'm sorry. It's not like me to move around. So, everyone in the audience, this is sparkling cider for all of us at home. So, today, I think that, over the weekend, I think, while I was doing some reflection about where we are and where we've come and where we've been, it just moved me that I went to, I don't know, my husband drove around to four different stores to find sparkling cider, which apparently is not a popular item in the middle of summer. So, and, and so, we were really talking about this, this Sunday in our church service, we were really talking about being thoughtful and being mindful about everything that's going on in our society and bringing yourself back to your center. So, and I thought about what that means and where we have been. I quote Henry Ford, where he says, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success." And honestly, five years ago, we walked in, we were $11,8 million in deficit, and look at us now. We are on the trajectory to make great progress come this next year. Of course, we have to be cautious and agile and watching the numbers and watching where we are. I think Mr. Milt, you said it beautifully, let our culture of positivity outweigh our negativity that's going on in the world. That is beautiful, I think that we must stay the course. And so, tonight, I want to give a special thank you to our, our superintendent who came in five years ago not knowing, not owing anything to the Hazel Park School District or community for being brave and doing what we've, what we've asked of you. So, thank you. I'd like to say to my fellow board members, you're awesome. Thank you for everything, the conversation, the learning opportunities, and the uncomfortableness, and while I feel this way or I don't feel that way, it's all part of the process and it's beautiful. Thank you, Jamie, for standing in for Debbie, and Debbie, thanks for putting this back to us, it helps us at home. Thank you to these wonderful people over here on the side who work tirelessly, along